There you go.
Hmm, we don't have to wait for the, we're not, okay. I'll wait for. Well, I will call the order, the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have an agenda in front of us, are there any additions or changes? No? I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda that we have in front of us. We have a motion on a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Uh, we have the minutes from the March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting in front of us.
Approved.
We've got a motion to approve the minutes.
Yep.
Yep, and we, do we have a second? We have a motion on a second, uh, all those in favor? Aye. Um, minutes are approved from the March fourteenth meeting. And then on our agenda for tonight, under Old Business, we have a public hearing pertaining to wedding special event venues within the rural residential areas.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission and members of the public. So continuing some of the discussion that the Planning Commission has had the last couple of months, staff did receive a formal ordinance amendment request. So that formal ordinance amendment request is the item that is under consideration this evening. So as you may recall, um, from some of the past discussion that uh, really one of the bigger questions that the Planning Commission is tasked with for this request is, uh, number one, is a use like this, as in a wedding or special event facility, is that appropriate in a rural residential district? Uh, yes or no? And then if it is, uh, what conditions should be placed on a use like this? So with that, staff has, now I'm not blinded. So with that, staff has, uh, assembled a consideration for a ordinance update per the request that the city has received. So the items that staff has inserted in that drafted language, um, tied to minimum lot sizes, requiring utilities, uh, requiring that the use is a conditional use. And then, um, we also have items tied to setbacks, creating a, uh, greater setback than what would typically be found in a rural residential district. And then also that off-street parking requirements and the city's transportation plan, we have in there what's called arterial streets. Uh, the use should be located on a arterial street since it would create traffic from in and outside of the regional area. So those are just drafted ordinance per the request. So again, Planning Commission is tasked with, is the use appropriate in the district, yes or no? And then if it is, uh, what should be the conditions be? So we do have a public hearing tonight, um, so the Planning Commission can open up that public hearing. And if I need to answer any questions prior, I'd be happy to do so.
All right, with that, I guess we will open the public hearing. Uh, if there's anybody wishing to speak, I don't know if we want to hear from the applicants themselves or if we're, uh, if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Ken Donal, this is Christian Farrell. Um, we reside at, uh, two-two-four, four Orchid Loop South in South St. Cloud, so five-six-three-oh-one. Um, we are presenting an opportunity to partner with St. Joe within the, um, wedding and event space, uh, most specifically wedding, uh, that we'd like to, uh, bring in purpose-built facility, not repurposed facility, but purpose-built facility. Uh, we're under the understanding that the, uh, rural residential does need to be, uh, approved through the conditionally used process uh, for more than just the property, uh, that we currently own. But, um, we are open to, I guess, hearing how that can work and how we can bring more opportunity to, uh, St. Joe and have a plan that we have, uh, come to know and love as our, uh, next venture, um, as really, I don't know, I, I think it's, we would rather have more of a back and forth than saying, you know, this is why it's going to be amazing and, and we know, um, that it will be, but some of the concerns that we've had over the last few months have been raised through the meetings and, um, through some discussion, and we'd love the opportunity for some back and forth to be able to answer any questions um, and to really find out how this can happen uh, versus trying to force anything to happen and, and if this is the right, um, if this is the right place to do so. Anything to add?
I, I don't know that I have anything to add, I'm just excited to hear your thoughts on all of it.
Thank you.
You want me to identify myself?
Yes, please.
My, my name is Joseph Bechtel, my wife Joanne. We live in the city of St. Joe, thanks to annexation. Uh, and we've lived there all, all my life. I just, first of all, I want to say that staff did an excellent job of gathering material for the Planning Committee to look at. You got a lot of information in this catalog. This colored map that was, is part of the agenda. I'm assuming this is all, all rural residents, the kind of a salmon color?
Yeah, it'd be that orange color, yep.
It's all zone RR.
Correct.
Okay, and, and the way I understand it, this public hearing tonight is not concerning a specific property. We're actually changing the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
And that is a serious thing to change zoning, it isn't like granting a variance three feet close to the line. It's serious matter when you change zoning, okay? And I noticed staff has also on the bottom of the, of this map listed nineteen properties greater than fifty acres, twenty-two, uh, more than forty acres. So that's a total of forty-one parts of the land that would be entitled to the same governing ordinance that we're talking about changing.
Y- yeah, so the way that we have it drafted, um, it's a forty-acre minimum lot size, but the use also, the way we have it drafted, has to be located on a arterial street.
Okay.
Um, so that would eliminate a lot of those properties.
And the other thing that's not mentioned here is this re-change in the zoning ordinance is going to affect a lot of other people that live in a rural zo- uh, our, our zone. It's not only the people that would qualify to put up the thing. And not everyone wants to live in a city lot fifty feet, forty feet, twenty feet from another residence. There's a lot of people want to live in a rural area. They want a four-wheel, throw up a little dirt, they want a snowmobile, someone want to plant a large garden. And anybody with gardens, they know, if you plant a little one, might as well plant a big one. Then you got too much stuff, you stick a sign out the road, pumpkin five bucks. I mean, it's a different group of people that live in a rural area. So this is only re-changing the zoning is going to affect all those people also, potentially. Uh, I know I see people plant a half acre of sunflower seeds in a rural area, just for the birds or whatever. It's, it's a different group of people that like space. And when do they enjoy their property the most? Evenings, weekends, the same thing that the proposed change would, would, the business would be operating in the same hours. What I don't understand is why we're changing this ordinance to allow a commercial use in a farm residence area, rural, excuse me, I use the word farm. And I might be referring to townships sometimes by accident because I'm, because I've been involved with local government zoning, planning thirty, thirty-five years, I was on APO. I've got some background in it, I understand it a little bit. So I might say township once in a while, I don't really mean it. I just think that you're opening up a can of worms. If all of a sudden you're changing the ordinance to permit these uses in a rural residence area and your ordinance says rural residence, I know there was a large annexation took place, so you threw a lot of land into rural residence. It says provide for very low-density residential development for those who desire real life. It says prevent premature urban development in rural area. Now, I don't know, I don't know what your comprehensive plan is, but you must have some area long-range planning for commercial. You must have, I would sure guess you would. And to me, I don't, I don't agree with changing this ordinance, changing rural residence to a commercial use. It's just the start of it, what do you, where do you go from there? Every business that starts intends to make it. This isn't the first, uh, event center we've had in St. Joe. We've got Randy, of course, he's very successful, he's in a commercial area. But there was another one, Delwin Ballroom Event Center, they didn't make it. So what do you do with a structure? You allow your people to put up a structure in a rural area that is a commercial use. What happens if, if the person passed away or other things, that the business doesn't make it? Now you have a structure in a resident, a rural resident area that's non-conforming. Like, it isn't like you can just turn it into another, you are going to change the ordinance again to permit that particular use. I think we have to realize what we're hearing. I'm not against, uh, uh, event centers, but I think it's in the wrong place. I think we're trying to change the ordinance to satisfy a particular individual. And I don't think you should ever change a zoning ordinance that easy. I don't, it, it's just not right. But I don't know i-if, uh, if you, what your comprehensive plan calls for. I-if this, if you've got a comprehensive plan and says this area is future commercial, I can understand z- uh, you're changing it ahead of time, but you're just to change it for all this property in the city, doesn't make sense. That's a serious thing to change the zoning ordinance. It's not just a everyday occurrence. Okay. The Delwin Ballroom, I know if you guys are familiar with it, it was the biggest public hearing we've ever had in St. Joe Township at the time. There were people outside, we opened windows and doors so they could hear. Many people for, many people against. It was approved, it was in a commercial area, I mean, excuse me, business area. It was approved but not an amnesty and, you know, so that's history there. But I knew, I wanted to say, I'm definitely against changing this zoning ordinance. I'm just against that, that's, that's not an everyday occurrence. And, and when I looked in the minutes in here and staff's recommendation, I think you have hesitation yourself. Because when I see you discussing this for months and then when you actually did recommend it, you put a whole bunch of conditions on, which is great, but in your wording, I think you said that you're, that you are open to a zoning change. And I know how this works, staff recommends to the planning commission and they take this information, have to make a decision. And being connected with planning and zoning for so long, many times planning commissions can't make up their mind. They'll say, well, we're only recommending, you know, we don't make the final decision, and that's true. That's true, you only make a recommendation to the city council. But it's your responsibility to make the right decision because the city council got a plate full of other, other things to do. You're the ones that have to do the planning for the future, zoning and so forth, that's your job. And how often does a city council go against you? I hope not very often, because that's your job. You can always say, ah, it doesn't make no difference, we're only recommending. That's not true, you might be only recommending, but it's your job to make the right decision. And I strongly against a change in ordinance. I think that it's a great deal to have a business come in town, it's a great deal to have these young centers, but not into a, a rural resident area. You can talk about farms and so forth, some people, some buildings get converted to other uses, but what do you do with the, to, with, uh, supplement buildings that support that principal structure, that principal use? Do you still keep granting permits, e-even if it's a commercial use? You grant permits for another building on the side for this or that? Or how, where do you draw the line then? Especially if you allow new buildings to be constructed in a rural area. I mean, how do you do this? You can build them to, to fit into, to, you know, the background and everything, but you're only a can of worms. You've got the door halfway open already for this, for something to come in with another use. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak at this time?
Hello, my name is Randy Schmitz. Um, I own a property at three-one-one-zero-one, County Road one-thirty-three, also known as Rolling Bridge Wedding and Event Center. Um, first off, I want to thank you for the past months of trying to figure this out. It's definitely a complicated issue, um, especially now that there's been an official request brought to, um, to this prior to, um, you guys being able to hammer out all the final details. Um, I've purchased, uh, our property, our current property in two thousand and one, just to kind of give you a little backstory. So we've owned it for quite some time. Uh, prior to me purchasing it and allowing it for the use that we had, we were in the St. Joseph Township. We were required to annex our property to the city, we were required to rezone it commercial. We were required to bring in full city utilities within one calendar year of that transaction. Um, our dream too, at the time, had been to fully restore all the buildings on our property and turn it into use that would draw and be a significant pull for the St. Joe community. I drove past that property since I could fit in a car seat. We didn't have car seats when I was little, so, uh, because my grandparents lived out by Jacobs Prairie and, um, always dreamt of doing something wonderful with it. Uh, we put our plans to paper in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, uh, prior to us being able to begin our project in two thousand fifteen, so it's quite amount of time. The reason for that, uh, was because projects like this at the time were very unique. Since then, there's been well over three hundred of these similar facilities built around the state of Minnesota, many of which have curtailed on building codes and, and that sort of thing. Um, and it's putting us in a similar condition to where I'm at right here tonight. I shouldn't have to be up here right now, specifically in my town of St. Joe, where there's already an ordinance in place for instances like this, so business owners don't have to go head-to-head and neighbors don't have to go head-to-head. Um, as Joe mentioned earlier, this isn't a project specific. This is specific to all fifty of those properties and to all fifty of the neighbors that adjoin every fifty-one of those properties. Um, people move to cities in areas based on these specific ordinances that are already in place. Um, when we moved here, it cost us over thirty thousand dollars in planning before we were able to even put a shovel in the ground. Fifteen thousand of that was spent on plans that were thrown out the window because I couldn't get clear answers from the city at that time. We ended up picking up a hundred-and-twenty-year-old barn and moving it seventy-five feet, so that was within four hundred feet of a fire hydrant, which is a requirement of us at that time. I had to pay three separate sewer and water connection fees. I paid three different utility bills each month, water and sewer. I had to run six-inch water mains into two of these buildings in addition to two, two-inch domestic water use lines. Our property too, had a historic house on which I intended to live in, in homestead, so that I could save myself the money on property taxes and running both businesses out of one location. I was denied the opportunity to do that and I was, had to keep it as a commercial office building structure. Um, so my concern is the city of St. Joseph has already set the precedent or the standard and my concern being here tonight, why I'm having to represent my business is just to make sure that that city holds up uh, that same precedent and standard that we were held to. Um, and again, I bring up the concern, you know, as Joe mentioned, that all of us businesses intend to make it, but we are not just talking about wedding and event centers, we are talking about other future potential businesses that are going to request the same type of allowance and we're going to draw the line, um, in that. And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak here tonight? I guess with that, at, uh, this time, I will, if we, if we, if I'm not mistaken, we have the ability to reopen or have a new hearing once we hammer out some of the issues. So with that, I think I will close the public hearing, um, and open it up for discussion among the, uh, uh, commissioners here. Um, I appreciate those coming to speak today, I know this is an issue that, uh, we've been talking about for a couple of months here already. Um, I, I was kind of, personally myself, I was kind of surprised to see an application come forward right away. Um, I guess I wasn't aware that there was anything that close on the horizon and I thought we were still kind of discussing when it came to this meeting here in April. Um, so that kind of caught me a little bit off guard. Um, you know, I, I like the fa- I appreciate the fact, Nate, that you mentioned that there's really two questions. One is, is this a, is a wedding or event center an appropriate use for a residential district? And if it is, what are the conditions? I appreciate that you've kind of broken that into two separate, um, questions. Um, in some of the information that you provide, that was provided to us before, it looks like, um, within Stearns County's ordinances, they do not allow event centers in a residential district. Is that, unless it would be a special event, would they conditional permit or something like that, provisional use?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, it's mostly in their agricultural areas. Um, I think one of the other counties we looked at allows it in the rural residential area, if I'm not mistaken, but I think that's accurate for Stearns County, yeah.
I guess I, I've struggled over the years with, with, uh, kind of the decision, decisions that have come about on the Planning Commission as a result of the annexation of properties and things like that. And I think it brings, it brings a need for extra awareness of the fact that not all these parcels wanted to be part of the city, not all these parcels are seeing benefit from being part of the city. So how do we harmoniously still keep a good community and good community vibe and, and the, and the nature of the, of the community of St. Joe and the surrounding areas while, while still allowing people to do what they should be able to do with their land and, and how they want to live their lives and where they choose to live? Um, I guess I, I kind of, even in the or, I, I'm, I'm struggling right now personally with the idea that an event center is an appropriate use in a residential area. Um, I guess I just, I look at it and say, you've got noise, you've got traffic, you've got just disturbance to, you know, disturbance to neighbors. I mean, I, I would think that it would be, you know, um, I don't know, I, I'm struggling with, with, uh, allowing an event center in a residential, in a residential district, personally.
Well, you know, in some of our original just conversations was going on the lines of an existing structure, you know, it's, it's some unique factor of the place and, and to, to, you know, part of it was, was it a, again, like a orchard or something that was trying to, you know, satisfy that need in their, in their business to just have on the weekends for, you know, fall and have this kind of type of event or this, you know, sale there. But when, you know, when we started going on the discussion of some commercial new building structure, it kind of veers off to a completely different animal because now it's not, someone's not living there, it's not residential, it's commercial. And now you're going to spot zone someplace within a rural residential area where doesn't make sense. And when you look at this greater plan, you know, talk about Delwin, I mean, now look what's at Delwin. Apartments, the, the homes have sprawled out and if, if that place would have kept going, it really would have deterred from what the bit, the city had in mind for that area. And, I mean, you can look at most places on this map and these are walking distance, biking distances within town. And I know a lot of people use that and I, and I know that, you know, because that's why I've called, you know, I reached out to you many times, I was like, okay, when you sent the, um, orderly annexation, you know, I was kind of, you know, after you brought that up, I was like, okay, what were the conditions? And if you repurpose, it has to be, uh, if you.
If it's developed, I was.
If it's not the same property, if you redevelop, you have to change its zone.
Well, it, it wasn't necessarily, this, this is a question I, I was wondering too, sorry if you're jumping in here, but the development of the parcel or the extension of public utilities or the service of the parcel by public utilities, in the orderly annexation agreement, it changes the tax rate description or tax.
Yeah, so it changes the taxing from the rural district to the urban district. Um, you could say it implies a zoning change, but the zoning language isn't clear in that agreement. It's more or less related to the taxing aspect of it.
And can you, can you, and you can tax a, you can have a, you could have a different taxing, you could have an urban taxing in a rural residential district?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
This might be a dumb question, but if you're requiring the facility to hook up to city sewer and water and that, um, encourages the assessment of all the neighbors along the extension of city sewer and water, do those neighbors end up in a different tax bracket because now they're paying for the extension and? Did those neighbors end up in a different tax bracket because now they're paying for the extension and. In theory have access to city sewer and water?
Yeah, so great question. So the extension would actually be paid for a hundred percent by the developer, the requister. Now, if there's a adjacent property uh to the proposed use and that water and sewer line gets extended. Um then they do have the ability to then connect. Um and we would uh encourage that and I would say that you could argue within the agreement too that. I think they have, they would have within so many years to connect.
Seven.
Seven, seven for sewer and then water, I think that they would have to connect.
And I think that's state regulated.
Yeah.
More so than anything if it's not. So it's not like they have the option, they're required to at some point in time.
Right, yeah, that's, that's accurate. So yeah, sewer's seven and the water, they would have to. Um the developer would pay for the extension. As far as the taxing classification for the one that would. Not be the developer, but they would have to hook up, um that may impact that as well since they would have uh services.
And your requirement that such a facility lie along an arterial road, forgive me for not knowing, but. Does that mean that your city's services are already laden along those arteries or not yet?
Not necessarily.
And then, and then question two is, cause you provided the two maps where we're existing network. And the, you know, twenty thirty five traffic forecast, those arterial roads designations change. And so what happens then? And all of a sudden you made a, you know, a commitment, rechange the property to. Because it fits the minor at one point, but now it becomes a major and, and you've now haven't planned for that, that's. I just, my opinion is, is I feel like if this is gonna be a commercial business and it's not someone's residence, they're not creating, it's not an existing. Um agricultural which fits the Stearns County, it should be in a commercial, commercially zoned. That's already that the city has.
Is there anybody else said, any other thoughts from anybody on the commission?
Nate, if we allow variance for an individual property to have this change be made. Does it have to be a blanket change for other properties as well? Can we do this for an individual instance like this couple's requesting?
So uh state statute doesn't allow us to grant a variance for a use. The use would have to be allowable either through a permitted use in that district or through a conditional use. Um variances are only granted for things like setback, slot coverage, height. Those um site specific uh elements, but not for a use itself.
I guess if you look at, you know, the, the very first intent, the par- very first paragraph of the existing rural res- residential district. The intent says to establish and preserve areas within the city for the continuation of agricultural operations. To provide for very low density residential development for those persons desiring a rural lifestyle. To preserve and protect where soil conditions, bedrock conditions, steep slopes, significant vegetation, wetlands. Or other unique natural features which are best suited for open space and limited development. And are necessary to maintain the character of the area or community and which would be irreparably harmed by denser development. And to allow for use of areas not suitable for urban development, to prevent rapid urbanization and provide economy and public expenditures. And to govern and implement the long range urban service plan of the city as identified in the comprehensive plan. That's gotta be one of the longest sentences I've ever written up or read, read aloud.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I guess, I'm, I mean, I, by definition, uh you know, by the intent of the ordinance, the way it's even written in the ordinance. Is to maintain this as a residential, residential agricultural rural district. And I think bringing in, bringing in a business. To me doesn't seem to fit, I guess.
The whole ma- cause I guess the city has to grow, right? We have to grow, we have to bring in new businesses. We have to be able to, just to, to grow as a city. I'm not saying we should put, you know, a, a event center in the wrong place. I'm not saying that, but you know, i- is there. Certain areas where the city is planning and developing anyway, some of these rural residential areas into more commercial areas where. That eventually maybe would fit that use then, you know, it would maybe make more sense to me anyway. If you were gonna allow that into a um future commercial development area. Um rather than just, you know, completely saying no, it, it doesn't fit at all, uh it would just depend on the location, I suppose, at that point, but.
Yeah, yeah, so it all depend on the location. We do have other areas that are rural in nature that do have a future commercial. Uh use tied to them. Um oftentimes those are areas. Where um the conversion of that will be in accordance to when, yeah, utilities get extended and the infrastructure gets extended. Again, going back to the orderliness of um the growth and how we wanna steer that, so.
You know, planning's kind of a, an interesting animal in that you can, you can plan and plan and plan all you want. But to a certain degree, you really don't have full control over. I mean, you only have so much control over what happens because you can forecast and you can predict and say, I mean, if you look at. You know, if you look at the whole area by where Countryman or where the care facility is now and Jade, you know, Jade Road, the, the school. There were single family residential lots plotted and, and planned for in these huge areas and by golly, plans change. You know, even, even infrastructure in the ground, plans still change. Um and so it's hard to. It's hard to see the future, you know, the traffic, the traffic maps and the, you know, future arterials and the future roadways and things like that. It's, I mean, it's an educated guess, but to a certain degree, it's still a, it's still a guess, it's still a, an estimate and it's a tough. It's a tough thing to necessarily grab a handle of.
Yeah, the biggest challenge is just not always knowing when certain properties are going to be ready to develop. Or come to the city and request uh the development, so.
And then also then having to be consistent with that same re- response. If someone comes to you and says, hey, I'd like to do this property and you turn them down, for what reason? It has to be consistent, otherwise you run that.
You set a precedent.
Yeah, so I. That's the, that's the challenge and the. The unknown. I mean, I've, like you said, you can have a plan. Here I have, I know the, the comprehensive plan, you know, goes way out and. Um and things do change. But I know, I, I guess in, in my opinion that. Having the fit of, like you said, the rural residential, you know, we're, we're going away from what we stated that is. Would we be creating more issues with, again, like traffic on, on roads that aren't ready for more traffic? The use of surrounding land, you know, is it used for park areas, walking? Is that, y- y- you know, even though it's maybe not yet, but five years from now, I've been, been where I am for ten years. And things have changed, so ten years is not far. Um so that's, that's the question and that can happen in any one of these, these areas and. I would hate for us to be responsible for changing spot zoning of us, an area and. And then also then, you know, not having to, would, in this, an example, would you have to then require the same things? That others were required, you know, cause originally we were talking and that's where I was confused. We were talking about, well, you wouldn't have to. If it was. So many people, you could get by without utili- you know, certain things and then it's just kind of trying to skirt around. Some of the requirements.
We were talking about um sprinkler system requirements for events under two hundred people?
Um three hundred, I think it is. Um yeah, so the sprinkler element kicks in for a capacity of three hundred or greater. Um but there's a.
Isn't there also a threshold just on the volume of space in the building for sprinkler requirements?
Yes, I believe so.
So something like a barn or an event center would probably trip that for just sheer size.
There's also a difference between city and rural. Fire codes, I believe. I believe, and I, I mean, in a, in a instance like this, these properties are within the city limits. So I would are, I mean, I would think then that it would be the city requirements that would govern and I believe their threshold is lower.
Yeah, so we would, we would go off the, we'd go off the state building code and we'd go off of um how we would define the occupancy. There's different occupancies within the state building code and then um determining what that uh occupancy is. And how that's defined as, then that's what we would go off and make it so what, that would decide what those requirements would be in that. Um it's a very hot topic at the state level and it has been for numerous years just because of the conversion that's happened. Um in the last five, ten years for uh old barns or that and converting that space into these types of uses. Um and there are, there are loopholes, there are uh ways that, there's a lot of gray. Um cause they could come in and say that, okay, it's two hundred fifty folks um here. And maybe they meet the spacing requirements and that, but then they go and have a, an event and. It's very hard to monitor that, then are we gonna go out there and count that they're out, now they are actually over three hundred consistently? So it gets into a really, really tricky territory to enforce and monitor. Be consistent, but at least at the, the application standpoint, we'd go off of that, what it's, what the occupancy is and what. We would define that as.
The state fire code applies everything. There's no difference between if you live three miles out of town, the state fire code doesn't apply. No, but it does. It's, you know, consistent.
Yeah, correct.
Exception because you live in this type of area or you resold commercial, residential, whatever. It's all uniform.
Yeah, it's all based on the occupancy, not necessarily the location or type of property, well, kind of type of property, but yeah, it's.
Yeah, and I, I might be quoting this wrong, um but I think it's a A two occupancy that most go off of. Um within the building code, the state building code and fire code, so.
So from us as a commission tonight, what, what are we looking to do tonight? I mean, do, I mean, we've got an application for a zoning amendment in front of us, so obviously we could. We could make a motion on approval or denial of the amendment.
From what I'm reading, I'm hearing to add a. Another al- item L, M to the uh conditional use permit column. That's what I'm seeing.
Okay, so is that, I mean.
I mean, there's no event center specific, property specific or nothing.
Well, it's an ordinance amendment, we're adding a def- it would be adding a definition of a special event facility and then adding par- sub paragraph M or whatever it is.
And under conditional use, it's always debatable.
Right, I mean, there's always room under conditional use.
Down depending upon what the uh.
What the conditions are that you put on it, by the nature of conditional use.
You know, not knowing specific property where, you know, this is being proposed. Because a property north of town would have a whole different impact in my mind than south of town. You know, it's, it's pretty tough.
Yet they're all covered by the same ordinance.
Well, that they're allowed.
Right, but does it.
Under the conditional use, you have a second tier of saying, no, you gotta do this.
Yeah, but you're still allowing it.
Yeah.
As long as you meet the conditions, but you're still saying it's an allowable use with conditions.
He went through all the conditional things that he was happy with.
When, when you did yours, Randy, I don't think I addressed them, but did, was it rural residential the same time too? I mean, did they, they made you do a zoning change in order to do the event center out there?
Um I was considered commercial property, highway business, which was an allowed condition within that district.
Okay.
And then, yes, I applied for a conditional use permit. I also applied for a variance, I did that on two different occasions. Cause I made a slight modification in year two. Uh originally we were open for business made through October. Um cause we wanted to get a feet on the ground, um and then we applied and had it open around.
Okay, so it was commercial to start with though?
Correct.
Okay.
Is the, you know, I just asked, is the commission comfortable with, you know, going back to those two questions, those initial questions, right? Um one, is this use appropriate in this district? Yes or no? Two, if the answer is yes, are the conditions that we have in the ordinance appropriate? Or are there other conditions that we should apply and um hold something like this to?
So do we need to frame that in terms of a motion, in terms of the application request or how do we need to pursue that?
Um I would just frame it with the uh ordinance that we have drafted. Um you can just, you know.
Okay, I guess. For lack of nowhere else to start, I, I would make a motion to deny the um. Application for zoning amendment because I, because the proposed conditional use is not consistent with. The residential nature of the rural residential um zoning district that it's in. I can come up with language if we need, I'm assuming you need some additional language as to why it's not consistent?
No, I, I think if you're just stating the intent, that the, the request is not consistent with the intent and character of the district.
That's what I'm, that's the motion that I'm making.
You don't wanna read that whole sentence again? Or paragraph?
I got a point of discussion here. You can't totally disallow an event center from. Coming to Saint Joe to plant a home. You have to allow it somewhere.
But there's other ways to do it. You can rezone a property, you can come into a commercial area. I'm just, I mean, I guess. Before us right now is the issue is, is an event center appropriate in a residential district?
Rural residential.
Okay, rural residential district.
I can, I can second that motion.
We have a motion and second, is there further discussion?
I disagree. I believe that we should allow for it. Businesses of any kind that are trying to start have a difficult enough time the way it is. With the amount of laws, ordinances that are on the book that they need to abide by. Without additional conditions that a committee such as ours would try to place upon them and I believe we should allow for it.
I think since we're talking about this, we should uh put it in our, you know, allowed uses under conditional use permit.
Y- yeah, so that's the draft.
This way we got it, it's covered, but it's also subject to uh disapproval if it's not in the right area. If there's enough uh.
Also, it doesn't matter if it's in the right area, if it's zoned that way and they're meeting the conditions that you've spelled out for them, it doesn't matter if you think it's in the right area or not. That's not the way a conditional use permit works. A conditional use permit says, this is a. That's not the way a conditional use permit works. A conditional use permit says, this is an, this is a use that we're allowing. Yes, you need to meet conditions, but this is a lu- a use that we're allowing in these districts.
Correct, yeah, so we wouldn't have the ability to deny.
Right, you couldn't deny it as long as you're meeting your criteria.
It goes back to that first question of if, is the use allowable in this district, yes or no, and if it is, if you think it is. Um, you know, it should be a conditional use at minimum, and then what other conditions should be tied to this? Uh, cause that's gonna really, that would set the standard on the conditions we could put on there. Um, the only thing else we could do is put other, what's called reasonable conditions, but we wouldn't be able to deny it. Uh, the use, once it's in there, in the ordinance.
But you're talking about this whole, our, our area.
Yep.
That's quite a bit of property within the city of St. Joe. So you're, you're eliminating all the possibilities of all the property owners that are out there.
To put it in this, to put it to.
A lot of property owners that have property in this uh, so-called fifty, forty acre tract, you're limiting their use of their property.
Without going through a rezoning.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's an allowable use in some of the city zones, correct?
Correct, yeah, so right now it'd be like B two highway commercial, it would be allowable downtown. So, yeah, that's.
I'm a, I'm more than a bit apprehensive about just opening that whole area up to this, even putting the conditional use on it. It's just, it's a lot of different property owners that would definitely have something to say if we had a specific parcel to talk about, but we don't.
We, we can't specifically look at just one parcel at this point, it's the whole, it's the whole zoning district.
Someone thinking of the consequences it might come about.
I, I think the fact that the orderly annex, the language in the orderly annexation agreement recognizes that development. Of the pro- parcel changes the nature of the parcel, I think that right there is in direct conflict with. You know, the ordinance where it states in subdivision twelve rural quality of life. Um, properties in this area are rural in nature and have not been impacted by urban development. And we're saying when you develop, you know, if you go in and develop a property that was in this orderly annexation area. You've now changed its tax status, status, you've, you've changed that property. It's not rural residential anymore, and it's, I, I guess, I just, I, I don't believe that an event center. I mean, I don't believe it's consi- well, like I said, I don't believe it's consistent with a residential district. But, so we have a motion in the second.
Correct, yeah.
Um, for clarification purposes, because of the way I worded the motion, um. An in-favor vote would be to deny the application request, basically stating that it's not a compatible use, is that correct?
Yeah, not a compatible use, and, yeah, and doesn't fit the, the intent of the district, yeah.
Okay. Um, with that then, I guess we will put it for a vote, those in favor? I, opposed?
Yeah.
I.
So we have two opposed.
Um, motion would pass, um, to uh, recommend denial. Two, we had two, yeah, so, yeah.
I mean, I guess on that, I mean, I, I'm not necessarily. I'm not gonna go down that road, nevermind. Okay, so then is there anything more on that item on the agenda that we need to address at this time?
No, uh, yeah, we were just looking for that recommendation, so then that recommendation would get forwarded to the city council.
Okay.
The city council then, uh, not next week, but the. What would be May second, um, for those that um, are in the audience, May second, city council. That would likely fall on that agenda, um, that recommendation, so.
And now the council, if they were to disagree with this recommendation, as was, as was eloquently put earlier in the meeting. Um, it would likely come back to us then to draft an ordinance amendment to allow it, is that?
So, yeah, so, um, yeah, they could go about it multitude of different ways. Um, they can just take the planning commission recommendation as is and just deny. Uh, they could uh, not take the planning commission recommendation and they could take um, the drafted language. They could throw it back to planning commission, say that, well, we do think that this use should be allowed. Um, but here are some other items that we think should be addressed, and then kick it back to planning commission.
Okay.
For consideration, so kinda three options, right, approve, deny, or um, work through some of the other.
Okay. With that then, I believe we can move on to new business and the joint planning district board termination?
Move to approve.
I'll just provide a really quick overview. So, yeah, so, um, so.
Resolution twenty twenty-two triple A.
Does the commission want me to provide a quick overview?
Real quick, real brief.
Okay, so basically the joint district planning area was developed some time ago when there was different. Entities and regions that were competing for different uses, they haven't met since two thousand fifteen. Um, all the other entities that are involved, uh, Sartell, Wade Park, St. Joe, um, the two different counties. Are all taking action on this um, termination of the, the board, there's just no reason for it anymore. Um, every city has their own subdivision code, zoning code, orderly annexation agreements. Um, so there's, again, they haven't met since two thousand fifteen, so, um, there's no reason to really continue the, the joint district. Um, you know, a lot of the objectives and goals have been met from that.
So we have a motion to approve, I will second, I will second that. Is there any discussion among any of the commission members? All right, all those in favor? I, opposed? All right, carries. Um, any other business on the agenda?
I have none.
We have a mo- motion to, we have a motion second, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.